Good morning, I'm Mayor Buddy Dyer and I'd like to welcome you to the Monday, April 11th, 2011 workshop of the Orlando City Council. Today, our workshop focuses on our Strengthen Orlando program, and you all recall that we launched Strengthen Orlando in 2009 as an effort to generate jobs and help our residents and small businesses weather the storm through this difficult recession. We didn't want to rely solely on federal or state programs, we wanted to see what we could do as the city government to create opportunity for our citizens. Through those efforts by accelerating public works contracts, we've created 900 jobs by expediting almost $180 million worth of work, and we've helped create another 600 jobs by expediting the city's planning and review processes. We've used Bi-Local Orlando as a means to achieve spending in the city of Orlando, and we've looked at a variety of things, including reduction in impact fees. And today, we're making an effort to move towards Strengthen Orlando 2.0, and Brooke Bonnet from our Economic Development Tarp is here to talk about that. Brooke?
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Before I get started, I wanted to recognize some people that have joined us today for this workshop. We have representatives here today from our economic development partner organizations, representatives from the UCF Business Incubator, and representatives from our Orlando Main Street groups. Today, we're going to go through a couple of things. We wanted to provide you with an overview of the Strengthen Orlando program and the results that we've seen to date, a general review of our business support programs and services for small businesses, our new Strengthen Orlando initiatives for 2011, as well as a summary of council action that will be requested in the coming months. As you know, the Strengthen Orlando program was a comprehensive action plan that was developed by the mayor in 2009 and 2010 to help sustain our community and ensure that Orlando remains economically competitive and helps to better position us for the future. There were six pillars of Strengthen Orlando: Orlando Connects, Orlando Builds, Orlando Works, Bi-Local Orlando, Orlando Partners, and Orlando Cares. Today, we're going to be focusing on just three of those pillars. We could probably spend an entire afternoon covering the other three, but today, we're going to focus on Orlando Builds, Orlando Works, and Bi-Local Orlando, the three pillars that impact our community from an economic development perspective and directly impact our small business community. The 2009-2010 Strengthen Orlando initiatives included a couple of things that have definitely been beneficial to our community. As you're aware, we made a decision to expedite permit and review process for projects that were creating 10 or more jobs. We offered payment plans for transportation and sewer impact fees. We provided commercial plan review in five days to help expedite construction, residential plan review in just one day. We deferred impact fee increases. We extended all permits for an additional year, provided same-day inspections. We offered home renovation reviews. The home renovation reviews, this is when we're actually sending out building inspectors to assist residential property owners with determining a plan of action to conduct any renovations that they wanted to do for their homes, and some of those permits, we were actually able to issue onsite. We expanded the UCF Business Incubator Orlando and its services, expanded the mayor's business assistance team. We recruited businesses to participate in the Orlando Main Street program, and of course, we launched the Bi-Local Orlando program. The results, what have we seen to date? More than 600 jobs created, as the mayor mentioned, in 2010 as a result of the expedited permit review. We administered 23 transportation impact fee payment plans, which resulted in projects getting off the ground and a revenue collection of 600, over 630,000, and employment in those projects of more than 200. We administered 10 sewer impact fee payment plans, and out of 60, almost 63,000 total inspections, close to 3,500 of those were requested and conducted as same-day inspections. And those are inspections that a contractor or property owner can call by 10:00 a.m., and if they make that phone call to us by 10:00 a.m., we will have somebody out there that day to inspect the work that they're requesting inspection of. We also created or launched the mayor's business assistance team Customer Care Center, whereas the business assistance team had previously been housed on the sixth floor of City Hall. We created a very accessible office within the permitting services division on the first floor. And Lillian Scott, the director of the mayor's business assistance team, is here with us today. Approximately 300 businesses were recruited to join the Orlando Main Street program. We had over 500 businesses registered or participate in the Bi-Local Orlando program, and over 120,000 consumer cards distributed. More than 900 jobs were created by expediting over 180 million in planned capital improvement projects on behalf of the city. Strengthen Orlando through the Transportation Impact Fee Payment Plan, some of the recipients include Piranha Cable, Jimmy John's, Draft Orlando, Ramada Plaza, Alfonso's. As you can see, these are businesses that many of you are familiar with and that all of us frequent, and you can see the direct impact that that payment plan provided to these businesses. These projects represented a total capital investment over 15 million, and just these projects created over 150 jobs. We also expedited plan review for projects such as Olenian and IGPS. These are two projects that were in downtown, that the two projects alone represented 85 new high-wage jobs to our economy and almost $400,000 in capital investment. Our current economic climate, I think we all believe, and I think the economists are showing us, that Orlando is well-positioned to recover from the recession sooner than other regions in the state. We are the fastest-growing metro area in Florida for employment growth and expected to be through 2013. We're expected to lead the state in personal income growth through 2013, and we have been the fastest-growing city in the state between 2000 and 2010. And certainly, the numbers show that we are one of the best and least expensive places in the nation to launch a new business. And the most important part is, I think, through our leadership, we remain committed to fostering a positive business environment that creates jobs and provides opportunities for our citizens and residents. So what's coming forward in 2011? Some of these items, Mayor Dyer announced as part of his recent State of the City address. There are some others that are on the list as well. We are looking to continue expediting permit and review process for job generation projects, continuing to offer payment plans for transportation and sewer impact fees. And just real quick, the transportation and sewer impact fee payment plans require that a property owner or contractor pay 50% at the time of permit, and then the other 50% is due at the time of certificate of occupancy. We're continuing to provide commercial plan review in five days, as well as residential plan review in one day. We are offering an extension on all permits for an additional year, continuing to offer same-day inspections, and continuing to offer home renovation reviews. In 2011, we are hopeful to continue our funding of our economic development partner organizations and continuing to fund the small business support and entrepreneur programs that the city currently has. We're also hoping to reinstate the business assistance program, which offsets permit fees and impact fees for new and expanding businesses, as well as extending our agreement with UCF for the UCF Business Incubator. We'd like to provide an additional five years of funding for the Orlando Main Street program, also looking at some fun and exciting Bi-Local Orlando enhancements. In addition, we are looking at making some changes to the city's transportation impact fee ordinance. Real quick, a lot of you are familiar and engage with our economic development organizations on a regular basis. Currently, the city funds the Black Business Investment Fund, BBIF, Hispanic Business Initiative Fund, Metro Orlando Economic Development Commission, the Disney Entrepreneur Center, and the UCF Business Incubation Program. And again, they're representatives from these organizations here with us today. These items, we currently have funding agreements with each of them that run through the end of this fiscal year, so there would not be any council action needed until we move through the budget process for the city this summer. Economic development programs and services, currently, we have the business assistance program that we're looking to reinstate, the Small Business Facade Program, which provides $50,000 per commission district to help fund facade improvements to small businesses, the Orlando Main Street Program, Bi-Local Orlando, as well as the Not-for-Profit Impact Fee Assistance Program. The mayor's business assistance team is functioning and helping to support a lot of our businesses as they move through changes in their organization and look at growth and opportunities. We're still funding, and actually, we have one coming forward today, the Qualified Targeted Industry Program, to help support high-wage, high-value jobs. The Minority Women Entrepreneur Business Assistance Program, also known as MIBA, and of course, we participate in the Enterprise Zone and Urban Job Tax Credit Program. The Enterprise Zone and Urban Job Tax Credit Program are both state programs that are geographically based, and so as long as we have the opportunity to participate, we'll continue to do that. Okay, the business assistance program, to date, the program was created in June of 2001, and again, offsets 50% of permit fees and impact fees to qualifying businesses. To date, we've assisted 51 businesses. The total capital investment of those business assistance program clients is close to $25 million, and the city's contribution was $441,000. So as you can see, that was a pretty good return on the city's investment. We will have council action coming forward, specifically a BRC agenda item to refund or fund the program during this fiscal year. And in addition, we're looking at some revisions to the program, just some cleanup items, and staff will be visiting with each of you to get your input on those. These are some of our business assistance program beneficiaries, I guess, to date. As you can see, it's a wide array of businesses, and I think for a lot of these businesses, and I'm going to use Logan's Deli as an example, Logan's is actually on Virginia, and an excellent little bistro, but for this business, I believe that they received the full $20,000 many years ago, but that was the difference in them being able to open their doors or not open their doors. And today, they're a highly successful deli that's employing many people and doing very well. In addition, you'll see Infusion Tea, Appenberry's, RL Burns, Bikes Beans Bordeaux, all small businesses that have seen great benefit from this program. The UCF Business Incubator, I'm going to switch topics here. The city approved a five-year agreement with the UCF Business Incubator in April of 2006, located in District 2. In February of 2007, we finalized the negotiations of our lease, and in January 2008, the incubator finally opened. So as you can see, we got a little bit of a slow start in there, but finally got it right, and it's doing really, really well. We opened with approximately 2,200 square feet, and in September of 2009, we had the opportunity to expand into adjacent space, and we now have an Orlando incubator in partnership with UCF that has a total square footage of over 6,300 square feet. More important than that, we have 16 current clients there, we've served over 26. Three companies have graduated, and to date, 83 jobs have been created. In 2009, when we did the expansion, if you remember, we used to have a downtown incubator in partnership with UCF, and that incubator was actually consolidated with the incubator in what had formerly been Herndon Plaza, the name has escaped me on what the plaza's called now. And that, what we believe was a good move, it's provided more space for the businesses, and they've got nice conference room capabilities, et cetera. Theragee, just a quick note on some of the client successes. Theragee has been selected as the 2011 Client of the Year finalist for NBIA, National Business Incubation Association, and that conference is actually going on this week, right now, hence the reason that Tom O'Neill, Dr. O'Neill, was not able to join us today. But as you've heard us brag often, the UCF incubation system has been named the best in the country on several occasions, so we're proud to be affiliated with them. Uniqi recently received, in their technology company, equity funding to pursue a prototype. And Learn2Learn, which has graduated as well, recently opened their own facility in central Florida, and they are now in the process of opening two more in other states. Where are we looking to go with the UCF incubator? What we would like to do is to actually extend the UCF incubator agreement through August 31st of 2012. The reason for that date is that we want the incubator partnership agreement with UCF to actually line up with the lease agreement that we have with Wine Garden for the space that the incubator is located at. The increase in funding to cover this year and a couple of months, I guess, would be close to 390,000, and the city's funding of the UCF Business Incubator is consistent with other sites within the UCF incubator incubation program system. Okay, moving on to the next topic, Orlando Main Street. All of you are familiar with Main Street. We have five Orlando Main Street areas within the city: Audubon Park, Garden District, College Park Partnership, Downtown South, Ivanhoe Village, and Mills 50. All of our Main Street groups are actually represented here today, and we appreciate them attending. We also are continuing to assist under this Main Street model several other business districts: Baldwin Park, the Milk District, Washington Shores, and the Cimarron Business Partnership. Orlando Main Street, and all of you should have at your seats a copy of the annual report, and that was delivered on Friday as well, but we're really proud of what Main Street has been able to accomplish in four years. We launched in March of 2007, and just running through October of 2010, the numbers are impressive. New businesses that have been created in this district, over 177, over 138 million in improvements to the districts, and this does include, and let me just clarify, this does include the improvements that are made within the two hospitals, Florida Hospital and Orlando Health, but even without, when those are taken out, there is over a $20 million investment occurring that has occurred within our Main Street districts once you take out the hospitals. Just some pictures of some things that have occurred, with a focus on events, there's obviously some physical improvements that have taken place, and under, those pictures under the physical improvements, the one is the palm tree on the Mills 50 area, and the palm tree is still tied up there, so I think once all the string comes off of it, it's going to look great. We've got some planters that have gone into the Audubon Garden, Park Garden District, and that red thing there, in that one picture, is actually one of the bike racks that has been installed. Action that we are looking to bring before city council would be to approve extension of funding for the Orlando Main Street program for an additional five years. Under this proposal, each Main Street district would receive $35,000 a year for an additional five years, and they would be required to raise $25,000 in matching funds annually. Each of our Main Street groups entered under the program with a five-year funding agreement from the city with a scaled-down contribution that would be required on behalf of the district monies that they would have to raise. And I think we've seen a lot of progress that has occurred within the districts. I don't think any of the five, when they hit year five, is actually going to be ready to graduate, but we don't want to stop a good thing while they're underway, and so we really believe that the extension and funding will help them to get to where they need to be. And when we agreed to the five years in funding, we were actually modeling that after other communities that were just a couple of years ahead of us in this government-funded model, and each of those communities has come back to and said that they needed a couple more years, so, but we're excited about what Orlando Main Street is going to bring. Bi-Local Orlando, Bi-Local was created in 2009 as a way to encourage residents and visitors to patronize Orlando's businesses, shop locally, and it encouraged businesses to offer some type of discount or incentive for people to come by and visit them. To date, we have 538 registered businesses in the Bi-Local Orlando program. We have a newsletter that goes out on a regular basis highlighting these businesses, and we've got a distribution of over 16,000 on that newsletter, and consumer cards we've distributed, over 120,000. The program has been a lot of fun, we've got many businesses that have seen improvement from it. We believe, though, it's time to go to the next level, and so we are actually looking at increasing some social media and digital applications, including potentially some smartphone-type apps that provide some real-time benefits to both the businesses as well as the consumers. So stay tuned, we're still in the process of determining exactly which way we want to go and what proposal we want to make to city council on that item. Transportation impact fees. Today, you are going to see the first reading of the exemption for transportation impact fees for changes in use, specifically for small businesses. For most of our small business assistance programs, we limit those programs to be used by small businesses as defined by the US Small Business Administration. So we've got consistency in how we administer small business programs. What we are looking to do is to exempt businesses that are going into infill spaces, spaces that already exist, from having to pay transportation impact fees. And the hope is that we can positively affect our absorption rate and get some of the vacancy off the market. The effective date, we're looking at April 25th with a sunset date of April 25th. The businesses would need to maintain the existing building square footage, so if you're going into a space or doing an expansion of a space, then you would not fall under this exemption. We had already talked a little bit about the transportation impact fee payment plans and the results that we've seen to date on that. Again, 23 payment plans that have been approved and resulting in 200 new jobs. We also want to look at some additional changes to our transportation impact fee structure and ordinance, and in order to do that, we believe the best thing to do is to go through a transportation impact fee study. This city's consultant has already been retained to research and propose amendments that would allow the city to utilize impact fee reductions and/or credit as an economic development tool. We do need to make some changes, I believe, to that. Right, okay, and so there will be an item, an amendment to that contract coming forward, hopefully the next city council meeting. And our goal is to package the amendments and the credits and exemptions and kind of target industries within activity centers, job-creating firms, targeted industries, and FJ calls it a thermostat, to look at making recommendations on what we'll call those transportation impact fee thermostat that will sustain us moving forward. We believe that the Transportation Advisory Committee is going to begin meeting in the near future. I think that meeting has already been set?
Not yet.
Not yet, okay, coming week, so it should be here pretty shortly, so that we can start to get input from that committee and to make sure that the business and citizen concerns are met. When we look at impact fee reductions and waivers, and I think recently you all received a memo from Mayor Dyer, there are other communities and counties throughout the state that have done either full suspensions or rollbacks, and that's one of the items that we will need to look at further. The county is in the process of doing a 25% reduction on impact fees across the board in order for us to maintain our regional competitiveness. We believe that it's important that we look at that, though I'll say that I don't believe the difference between us and the county is 25%. Even when they do a 25% reduction, there are some areas that our fees, even at today's rate, would be a little bit lower. So we're going to have to figure out what that correct percentage would be. This is an example of, before you today, of Florida counties that have taken action, and certainly, we need to look at how to protect our transportation infrastructure and the needs that we have moving forward with the needs to support businesses and property owners moving forward. Certainly, a good transportation system is inherent to good economic development policy.
Commissioner Linehan's rung in, she's got one slide left, won't we let her finish, and then I'll come first to you?
So the summary of council actions moving forward, things that you'll see coming before you. Again, reinstatement of the business assistance program through a BRC item, as well as potentially some revisions to that program that would come before you as a consent item. Approval of the UCF Business Incubator funding extension, which is on today's agenda. Funding extension for the Orlando Main Street program, that would be taken up as part of the city's budget process, and there would not be any actual contracts that would need to come before you until the start of the next fiscal year. And then, of course, adoption of the ordinance exempting small business change-of-use permits from transportation impact fees. So with that, happy to take any questions, we've got the whole team here, so.
Thank you, Brooke. We'll start with Commissioner Linehan, and then Commissioner Sheehan.
Thank you, Mayor Dyer and Councilwoman Brooke. Just a couple of questions or comments. On the transportation, starting from the back going forward, on the transportation impact fee, if there's no additional square footage to an existing space, why can we not allow the expansion and have the impact fee reduced on the new space as opposed to just keep everything status quo?
I'm going to have Jay take that.
We took a look at that, and it really is at your discretion, if you want to exempt the existing square footage, we can do that. What we were really concentrated mainly on is making sure that the existing built environment receives infill attention from potential new businesses, so that was really what the focus of the ordinance change was.
Well, I'm just looking at an opportunity to expand it. I know we're working on that now. I know we're working on that now. As a matter of fact, we've just had a situation in District 5, in Paramore, where a new business moved in and was eligible, literally, for the existing impact fees, which we couldn't even determine. But had there been an opportunity to expand the space, my concern was, first of all, our policies should be waive the existing and look at what we can do about the expansion assessment, because it doesn't literally kind of corner you in, just block you in to not move in, even to a patio space. Maybe that's not a part of the transportation impact fee, but just having some flexibility in that area.
Okay, we can, we can look at the ordinance and kind of, we'll confer with the city's attorney's office.
We're on first read today, but Commissioner Lyman's right that if you're, you know, just thinking about it in a realistic manner, that if you were going to do your building at the existing, but you wanted to expand it by 10%, you wouldn't expand it by 10% because you wouldn't get any of the impact fee off, perhaps. So we can look at that between this reading and the next.
Yeah, we can look at tweaking that.
Right, okay. Thank you very much. Another issue that I think we ought to look at on this BiLocal, which is not new for me, I've been advocating that since 1998, is that we need to move forward, not just asking people to go to local stores, but to include a local preference in all of our contracts. I've said this before, and I believe it's just a logical progression on what we ought to do. It does not exclude out-of-town or out-of-state companies, particularly if they have a unique entity or product that we need. But if they're local, there should be some advantage point. We got into this last year, or year before last, with, I think, engineering firms, just about where they were in Orlando, not even out of the metro area. So to me, I believe, just the last City Council meeting, I didn't vote on two issues that took business to Texas and Wisconsin or somewhere in Minnesota, because the difference in what was local and going out of state was $100,000 on one of them, I remember. And to me, to infuse these businesses here would have kept those dollars here and given us a greater impact. This is, as I said, it's not new, it's something I've been advocating since 1998. So I believe, once we look at an ordinance, we really need to think serious. BiLocal is good, but it's low-hanging fruit. I mean, it's common sense. But to advocate for business expansion and keeping those dollars in Orlando or in metro Orlando makes more sense to me, and I think it makes more sense to the businesses. And if you remember, a few years ago, we had to go, I don't know where it was, for the police motorcycles. There was, Harley-Davidson Company did not have, at that time, the capacity to give us all of the whistles and horns and things that we needed. So I asked, someone needs to go talk to them, get them ready, because that would not be the last order, to keep that business here. They've been great corporate partners, and when they were in my district, I had a chance to ride a Harley-Davidson. I failed the motorcycle class, but I can get a Vespa. And there is now a new motorcycle that has, like, a tricycle. So maybe that's more my style. But I am just saying it should give you the essence of bringing those dollars here. Another issue, just last week, a week before last, an economic study was released that showed that 40% of African-Americans' total assets was $2,200, $2,200, as compared to majority population of 97,000. Look at that, great disparity. So to me, as a commissioner, and everything I do is about jobs, it's about, because if you, I can't sell you a house if you don't have a job. So we've got to look at those businesses for these minority companies. And when I discuss MIBA, or the start of MIBA with Byron, my vision was to make sure those existing companies were helped. And it started because of Paramore, because all of those minority businesses, all those black businesses, literally disappeared, along with over 4,000 households. So I see a renewal of some of these things, but we really have to keep our eye on the prize and understand the policy we execute will have long-term effects, and that's why the BBIF is crucial, and that's why the Small Business Administration is crucial now, because they have just increased their capacity by five, to $5,000, and they're working with Wells Fargo Bank to have, even with construction loans. So we need to be up to date on that. I thought of another issue that I wasn't happy with the way it was presented, and that was the UCF incubator. That incubator started in 2001 or 2000. I remember, because I was busy trying to get a BBIF incubator, and I looked around and there was UCF, and it kind of pissed me off that I'm working hard on one and someone literally takes my thunder and goes there. But we're talking about these programs. I think we ought to be historically accurate, and to say that it started in 2009 or whatever just simply isn't accurate. It was 2001, I believe, 2001.
The downtown incubator, correct.
On Pine Street. And you did say that you, the old, but we need to give credence to history.
Commissioner, that's a different facility. This incubator's out in District 2.
Well, there was one right here.
You're trying the downtown incubator, right.
And it may be a new one out there, but the first UCF incubator was started downtown on Pine Street. I was here on the council when we voted for it.
And that's a technology incubator.
That was the technology incubator that we, that we merged with the other, correct?
Right. But I'm just saying that there ought to be some flow of, we've done things with UCF for many, many years. There is another article that came out about Orlando growing with jobs, but low-paying jobs. I don't have a problem with low-paying jobs, because everybody can't work in skilled jobs or white-collar jobs. So as much as we put in two high-paying jobs with this, whatever program we're dealing with, state programs, which may disappear, as you alluded to, I believe we also have to look at our low-paying jobs. We have to look at our homeless population getting jobs. We still must include our ex-felon population. Ex-felons have to eat and feed their families, especially when they've paid the price, served the time, just as we did with the blueprint. I don't know whether everyone else got their numbers, but the blueprint office has been impressive in the jobs that we've moved. And I think some of those numbers could be incorporated into the economic impact for Orlando. I know Mayor Dyer and I talk about it all the time in the community, but there doesn't seem to be much thunder when we come here to give any kind of credit to the real push to get people jobs. They may not be the highest paying, and that's why I do support, whether it's in janitorial services, whether it's in construction, whether it's concessions, I don't care what it is, anything that we can do to also engage women-owned businesses, minority-owned businesses, is crucial to me. And I would like for us, when we give these economic reports, and it was a good report, to make sure we include our whole city and pieces that we're doing across the board that makes, that includes my district. I don't have a Main Street, because Main Street caused Paramore area over $8,000, and they didn't even have any money. So at one, at some point in the future, when the businesses become more sophisticated, have more capital, maybe that's an option. But I would like to see the numbers, when you say Main Street created these businesses. How many were existing? How many we helped create in terms of the city? And when you say "create," what do you mean? They created businesses or they started businesses? I find that kind of, kind of bloated, but I will support it, because anything that's going to create businesses and jobs and job opportunities, I will support. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, Commissioner Sheehan.
Well, thanks, Mayor. And Brooke, first I want to start by saying I love the facade grant program. And Mayor, I hope we can continue funding that, because that's just been an absolutely wonderful program. I mean, that's something that had been funded for many years, even though it was in our code, and we've seen such a difference that that's made. So I certainly, certainly support that.
I think everybody shares your sentiment on that one.
Well, it's kind of, it's kind of interesting how I was the only one at first, and now everybody's adopted. It's awesome to see that change in feelings, so I'd love to see that. Also, with the impact fee reduction, I almost jumped out of my chair when I read the memo, because I was so excited about that, because so many small businesses talk about the difficulty of paying the impact fees, and sewer impact fees are another hurdle as well, if we can kind of work on ways to be able to assist them with that. But I think this is a fantastic way to get some of these empty spaces filled. And again, that's something that I kind of got tired of wailing in the wind about, and I saw it in a memo, and I was so excited to see that. So thank you so much. That's such a great idea, and I'm sorry it took so long to get going, but, you know, I'm delighted, absolutely delighted to see it. The partnership with UCF has been wonderful. I'm also hearing feedback from small business entrepreneurs who said they got their start there and who have nothing but nice things to say about the UCF Entrepreneurship Center. So I think that's also a great thing that we need to continue doing. The Main Streets have had a tremendous impact, especially in my district, to the north and south end of my district, and love to see those continue. And I share, Commissioner Lyman's concerned about the expansions, because I know that there have been some small businesses in my district that have, you know, gone into the adjacent space or whatever, and I'd hate to see that to be a disincentive. And also, if there's some way that we could look to deal, especially with sewer impact fees, if they were to add patios or porches in order to not disincentivize them, you know, when they add a couple of extra seats, to have it cost so much that they can't do that. So I think that might be another opportunity to help out as well. And the Business Assistance Program, I mean, since we've been doing that, I've seen, you know, I kind of looked down that list, and I know a lot of those, a lot of those folks and how it's really assisted them. So that's a great program, too. So, I mean, I'm very supportive of all of the above with maybe a couple tweaks and a couple of additions, I think that can really make a difference. And again, I'm glad to see these things finally coming to fruition. It's really exciting. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Stewart.
Thank you, Mayor. Let me also congratulate you on the Main Street. Maybe you've heard me speak about that publicly, and how excited I am about continuing that. What's, and kind of a byproduct of what we're doing with the Main Streets, is it does allow us a venue to be able to talk aggressively about what the things we're doing with the city directly to the businesses, and really excited about that. And we're able to do some problem-solving as well. So I appreciate the staff, as well as each of our Main Streets, and the work they allow us to do that. Let me ask a couple of quick questions about transportation impact fees while we're here. One of the concerns I have when I begin to look at the ordinance from a policy standpoint is that we've set the effective date as of the 23rd of the next proposed meeting. I don't know, what does that do to us in terms of actually implementing the policy? I guess, in other words, let me kind of say it a different way. Do we expect people to kind of come in in the next two weeks, and when they do apply for permitting, are we just going to ask them just to hold that up until such time is approved?
We've got people waiting right now to see what happens, both today and on the 25th. And so typically, when we talk about effective dates, even back in 2005, when we were working on the, on the adjustment to the rate, kind of setting that effective date kind of at second read is typically how we've handled it in the past. And so predating the effective date kind of gets you into the question of kind of where do you, where do you draw the line? And so we've, we've had a lot of discussion about that in the last week or so.
Well, my, my just first thought was that you predate it to today, the first reading, so that staff knows from effective this day forward, assuming it's approved, we'll be working, we're not, kind of trying to hide anything. The idea was set today, and then when it's approved, if it's, if it gets delayed to 26, to the first week in May, or wherever it may be. At least they know that we're not trying to circumvent policy. We haven't got to make a policy statement. It's there, it's available, they can continue to start processing those right away, knowing full well that it's approved. They'll go back and, back to this point, when we made it public.
Okay, we can, we can work with the city attorney's office on that, and then we'll just communicate that down to staff. And so today's action, depending on what it is, is kind of the, everybody's kind of getting fair warning.
Yeah, I understand. I guess the question I have is, I don't want to put our staff in a position of trying to have to negotiate without having some guidance from here. I think all of us want that. We want to be effective as soon as we can.
Uh huh.
But moving it two weeks means we may have some stuff happening in the next two weeks. So I just, that's an amendment I'm prepared to make today, if we talk about it later on, just to make it effective today, so that our staff has a little better guidance from us.
Okay.
On the BiLocal Orlando, man, the go-to, to social media is a great idea, and would love to have that happen months ago. So I don't know what it takes to accomplish that task, but, but I've had a lot of wonderful success in the College Park area and the Audubon Park area, and I get a lot of free cups of coffee that way. So I kind of like that, too. But I do think that we, people continue to use them, I see them, and they're proud to use them and proud to support our city, so I'm, I'm excited about that. The other question I want to ask briefly, and I guess probably in terms of permitting. We've implemented some changes in terms, in terms of permitting, and so I guess the question I would ask is, is, is are we on target with the implementations that we've made? In other words, let me go to the end and come backwards. Are we going back and doing some post-permitting surveys to our clients to see if the customer satisfaction was there and the anticipated to be? I guess the problem is that, I guess, I can't speak for the entire council, but I only really hear about the problems. So, so they get accelerated pretty quickly. So are we doing some things in terms of post-permitting survey and some follow-up interviews to confirm that kind of information?
Tim will speak to that in one second. I did want to add that we have gone back and looked at all of the permitting initiatives that were announced as part of Strengthen Orlando that we implemented in 2009 and 2010. And I'm happy to report that in most, actually in all of the cases, we have a 98% achievement rate, meaning that on commercial plan review, accomplishing that in five days, we achieve that in 98% of the cases. The same with plan review in one day for single-family in pretty much all of them. So we have gone back and looked at that, but I'll let Tim speak to the rest.
Thank you. Good morning, Councilwoman, Mayor. We are following up with our customers. We have a couple of, we do it a couple of different ways. We have a survey that we're asking our residents to, and customers, to fill out online. We have a bookmark that we actually give them, and the bookmark kind of guides them through how to do the survey. But, you know, from time to time, we pick up the phone and we call them and just check back to make sure everything went well, and just, you know, just a personal touch here and there. We have a couple of people on staff that, you know, take the time to just make the phone call. But we don't actually document it, but we, we just keep up with it.
Well, you've heard me say on many occasions, Tim, I would love, I'd love to have everybody in permitting work and talk and act like you.
[laughter]
Because I think that you have exactly the right heart and mind of making sure that you're protecting both the citizens of Orlando as well as promoting business. And so, so I speak very highly of you, obviously, in public. I don't know that many times, just the management, that kind of gets its way down to the lower levels. And so the concern I have is that what are we doing to make sure that the line person is having the same type of, of customer accommodations, a customer response that you have personally? And then the second, probably in a little bit broader spectrum, is, is it possible to bring together eight or 10 or 12 of those people who came in and cut permits with us and sit and talk in a roundtable discussion to see if there's other things that we can do to be able to accelerate some things? You and I talked, I guess, probably years ago, that much we could do electronically. Is there an app out now that allows somebody to kind of, can physically check on the status of their, their permits and be able to be approved, literally in the field, as opposed to having to come back in? I know you're doing some of the things aggressively online, as well as aggressively on phone calls. But I'd like to kind of hear those kind of comments in, in a more of a safe environment when, when the project's over, to say, gosh, I wish you had done this, or, you know, so-and-so's doing this, and gosh, it'd be easier if we could kind of route it that way. Because I think we have seen a significant success with Lillian and the staff that you're doing, because having somebody kind of have a broader appeal to it a little bit helps us kind of pinpoint where. us kind of pinpoint where some issues are and we can address those issues.
We're continuing to be, to try to be as innovative as we possibly can in terms of how we translate some of the thoughts and the, the ideas that I have down to staff. What we do is we try to continually do training. We have some live scenarios from time to time where we sit down with staff and walk them through how we want to see things being done, our business rules. We're trying to continue to strengthen those. In fact, we're right in the middle of writing some business rules so that everybody does things consistently. We all need to walk the same walk, same, talk the same talk. Working on strengthening that right now as we speak. In terms of how we get more innovative, you know, we have some ideas and hopefully we'll be bringing those forward. One of them was electronic plan review. But beyond that, we've got to be careful. There've been some softwares that have come out that have actually helped people to do everything, you know, out of a field office or in a remote location. Some of the drawbacks to some of that has been that it also allows some of the public to go in and alter things that they shouldn't have access to. So we want to be careful that we approach it the right way and do things the right way. So we'll, we'll continue to try to reach out and be active, actively promoting all of our electronic and, you know, apps and things of that nature. I think a lot of the smartphone technology now that's happening is going to be helpful. We're, you know, continuing to look at that and trying to make sure that we expand any way that we can, our IWR and IVR. That has been a really, really tremendous thing that helps a lot of people. I get a lot of comment, compliments and comments about how good and how easy it is to do things online. So I think there's a lot of innovative, you know,ness that has gone forth with that and I'm really happy about that.
Well, I appreciate the work you guys do. I just, I want to make sure, the reputation in town, in the community is that Orlando is, seems to be the most progressive and seems to be the best in terms of response. I will tell you candidly, I don't know that only because all I get is complaints. And, and I don't mean that to be, I shouldn't say that, that's not exactly the right word. I should say that when, I don't get a call from somebody saying how wonderful y'all were. I get a call that says, it's taken three extra days and what's the problem? And then you step in and all of a sudden it gets solved, which is, I think, the appropriate way to do it. I can't imagine that there are other communities in this town that are getting those calls 10 or 15 times a day. I'm getting them relatively infrequently. So I think we, I think we speak very highly about what we do and I think we are responsive in what we do. I just like to take this opportunity when there's kind of a downturn in the economy to get better at what we do. Because it, when it, when the economy comes back up, I'd like to have already in those, in place those things that will allow us to streamline without having to have increased costs and effort. And I think we have the right attitude on it. So don't take me wrong that I'm thinking I get 25 calls a day. But it is, I would like to hear our constituents call me more often. So please call me if you're listening, tell me the great experiences you're having so I can transfer those back to y'all to, to encourage you to continue to keep doing that. Thank you very much.
How about if we just have anybody that's listening calling you?
No, I'm not sure that would work.
Well, I'm not sure there's more than about three out there on Channel 199. All right. Commissioner Rings, then Commissioner Ortiz, and then Commissioner Diamond, right?
Thank, excuse me, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Brooke. I enjoyed the presentation, very comprehensive. But one question I have in reference to the transportation impact fee study, who is the consultant that has been retained and when did they start? And also what have they done today?
Tyndale Oliver is our consultant. They were selected about a year ago and they've basically collected all the data associated with the new impact fee or the impact fee study to date. And one of, one of the concerns we had was kind of rolling out, I mean, just given the, the state of the economy, kind of rolling out a, a new fee plan kind of in this environment was one of the concerns we had. So, so that's basically kind of where we are right now. And so this, this amendment to the contract would come up at the, we're planning on the next city council meeting on the 25th for your review.
Okay. And while you're there, can you explain the concept of thermostat on the transportation impact fee?
Yeah. One of the things that we, that we, we've been wrestling with is kind of balancing the short-term capital infrastructure needs with kind of long-term growth in the city's tax base. And so one of the things that, that we hear is that, well, my barrier to enter the market is too high because my upfront capital costs are too high. And one of the components of that is the transportation impact fee. And so the thermostat is, is a way to kind of use the city's growth rate as kind of the indicator. And so in times when the growth rate is high, the thermostat kind of sets the impact fee at, at a, at a higher level. And then at times when the city's growth rate is low, it, it gives city council guidance on how to scale that back to a more appropriate level to ensure that we're getting that infill and that new growth.
Was this your, your concept?
No, it's, actually it was from the consultant. And so that's one of the things that they'll explore, that along with the targeted industries and the targeted areas.
Okay. And then the Florida counties that's listed with the fee, fee reduction and suspensions? Orange County is not listed in that group? Can you explain why?
I think theirs has just kind of gone through either a work, work session or first read, so they have to go through two, two readings as well.
Commissioner, this slide is, it's a 2010, it's 2010 information. So they've just done this. This does not include any counties from 2011.
Okay. So, all right. Thank you. And then the last thing, and thank you. Brooke, and that is specifically as we talk about these Strengthen Orlando initiatives to small businesses, that's not me.
Is that me?
As we talk about these initiatives to small businesses and to support small businesses, specifically, you know, as I look at this, I see basically the central core Orlando, but as we get out into southwest Orlando where District Six kind of resides mostly, I don't see much of anything there. And I, I noticed that something's mentioned about Washington Shores as it relates with the Main Street program. But in the meantime, what are we doing to kind of help some of the small businesses in that?
Well, with, with all of the commissioned districts, including District Six, the Business Assistance Program is applicable, the Small Business Facade Program, and of course, QTI, which is a state program that we participate in. The Mayor's Business Assistance Team is available to serve those businesses. And District Six also has a portion of the Enterprise Zone as well as the Urban Job Tax Credit Program that runs through that district based on, based on the census tracts that are there. And so I believe that we've, we've got the tools and the programs in place, but even beyond that, the organizations that we fund through BBIF and HBIF and the Disney Entrepreneur Center, those are all organizations that are on the street and available to assist business property and entrepreneurs at the very startup stages when they're still in the process of helping to define their business plan. And of course, the incubator is open to constituents and businesses district-wide.
The Bi-Orlando program?
Citywide, I mean.
The Bi-Orlando program, is this a citywide program?
Bi-local Orlando, mhm, is citywide.
So how many of those businesses?
Fall within, I don't know, Commissioner, we can pull that information though. Yeah, we actually, even on the Bi-local Orlando website, we actually track it, the list of businesses that are participating by neighborhood. So we can pull that information and get that to you pretty quickly.
Okay. Because I want to do whatever we can to help strengthen the Bi-Orlando program and any other program that we're doing within our districts. And so I would need a lot of assistance. I know Kim King has really been there and Pauline has been there too with our Washington Shores Business District. And we just have to kind of strengthen those efforts too. So thank you very much.
We're happy to partner with you on that.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Ortiz, did you get your question answered along the way?
I passed.
Okay. Commissioner Diamond?
Thank you, Mayor. Brooke, good presentation. Thank you very much. When we get the impact fee information, can you provide the overall information as far as what total impact fees are? I understand the county is going to be looking at their impact fees or they're in the process of doing that. I'm also curious about what the school board is doing or not doing or what the county might be doing with respect to the school board fees and then what our, what our totals are as well.
Okay. We can certainly provide that. The county is actually making a recommendation to the Orange County School Board that the Orange County School Board take action to reduce their fees as well. And I think by 25, when does it say, 25? 25%.
Okay. Also on your list, I didn't see any cities on there. Can you, can you or your staff look at that and see if they're in cities?
Certainly. This was the most readily information we could provide when we were doing the research. The county stuff came up pretty quick, but we can look at cities as well.
Okay. Also, you mentioned the, the Enterprise Zones during your talk. Are those maps on the city website or?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, the maps for both the Enterprise Zone and Urban Job Tax Credit Program are on site. We also have parcel listings on the city's website. And we actually field a lot of calls from consultants that are doing work on behalf of businesses to determine whether or not they fall within those zones.
And as far as the, the business incubators can, how many are there now around the community?
There are, Kim, nine, nine? Fred is telling me nine within the UCF incubation system. And they run Seminole County, Lake, Daytona, yeah, Winter Springs, they're throughout. This is obviously the most central. And then the original UCF incubator is out within the Research Park. And that's pretty spread out there.
Okay. And as far as the companies that graduated, I know you mentioned them. What, what kind of businesses or what sort of industries are they in?
They're a mix. Let me let Kim speak to the, the clients. She interacts with them on a regular basis.
Good morning, Commissioners, Mayor. The Orlando incubator, the business incubator in Orlando, I, I want to say that it's probably one of the first mixed-use incubators that was done by the UCF Business Incubation Program. Prior to that, their focus is really on technology companies. But based on the companies that we had looking into and applying, I think has now created kind of a trend with the incubation program. So we have everything from technology companies to, we, we had even at one point a grant consultant. We had a company that was working on a, an ocean-based skincare line. Theragey is a company that is actually a management consulting company for pharmacies. And that's a company that very excited about, they're really, look like they're about to kind of take off and Commissioner Ortiz is very familiar with that. The Business Incubator has done a, about two or three what they call pitches. And so maybe that's something we can invite all of the commissioners to at some point so that way you can learn more about the companies that are there. Each of the companies gets about five minutes to present about who they are and what they do. And the Commissioner and I have attended several of those. But it's also great for the companies themselves to learn about one another and what they do to be able to do some business with, with one another.
Well, and there's some good stories there.
Yes, absolutely.
Some good companies doing some good things, it sounds like.
Mhm.
Okay. And then I wanted to ask as far as permitting, Tim, Tim had a couple of initials, you said, and I'm not sure I caught them. Can you say, say that again and tell us what they are?
I'm not, Commissioner? Oh, IVR. I'm sorry. It's the Interactive Voice Response System. And that is, it's a, it's an acronym that we use freely, but it simply means you can go online and, well, through the phone, you can schedule your inspection. It's almost like calling and then press the number, dot, 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 you know, and you get the inspection that you want. I'm sorry.
And the other one was?
The IWR, the Interactive Web Response System.
Same sort of, okay.
Yes. And we're upgrading those systems right now, so they're going to get better and faster and they're like.
Okay, great.
Sorry about that.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Brooke and the rest of the presenters, thank you very much for your education. All right. That will conclude our council workshop for April 11, 2011.